I'd like to welcome everybody out to the September 8, 2025 council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Does any member of council have a conflict interest or the appearance of a conflict interest in regards to any item on the agenda? So please state this time.
No, sir.
John?
No, sir.
Mike?
Nelson?
Do not.
All right, moving on. Approval of draft agenda. Does any member of council have anything that needs to be changed? If not, can I have a motion to approve the draft agenda?
So move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. General council discussion. Any member of council have anything?
Yes, I do. I have several things. First of all, just as usual, we had a Brunswick County Shoreline Protection Meeting, August 20th. Things were a little different at this meeting. For the first time, we had a reporter attend the meeting. And if you read the Brunswick Beacon, there was a great article on what happened at that meeting. So if they're going to be sending reporters here, there's no reason for me to do this, but this, that was a great article and she did a very nice job with it, I thought. Two things at the shoreline protection meeting, very quickly. As a reminder, don't forget, in the past, we've talked about the Carolina Long Bay Wind Energy Project off the coast of Bald Head Island. We've continually talked about that. Two companies have been awarded contracts to develop the shoreline or offshore wind, Duke Energies and Total Energies, Total Energies. Now, the news at this meeting for the first time was that Duke Energy has recently announced it will pause its pursuit, and that's a quote, pause its pursuit of the Carolina Long Bay Wind Energy Project. Now, in the same time, Total Energies have said they're going to continue along, they're going to continue. But as I've said in the past meetings, as stated before, the new administration in Washington are not fans of wind energy. And they could hold up money for both projects at any time. There's a lot of federal money involved here and it can be held up at any time. So the companies involved are being a little bit more cautious with Duke Energy saying we're going to pause for a while. The second thing that happened at the meeting, we had a guest speaker, John, his name is John Zoka, CEO of the Conservative Energy Network. And he talked about the benefits, the benefits of wind energy as far as the structures were concerned, the structures. In the past, he talked about oil rigs, when they were done producing oil, of course, the topsy oil rigs would be taken away, but they would usually cut the structure down right to the ocean floor. And it'd be just like, leave it the way you found it type of thing. But lately, they've been leaving those structures, the bottom structures up. And they've been great, as he talked about for sea life, recreational fishing and so on, they've been act as artificial reefs. So he gave us a lot of information on that. And the bottom line for all of us here, living along the Atlantic coast, is whether wind energy projects are an asset to the oceans and marine life or not. That's what everybody's trying to figure out moving forward. So that's going to continue, we'll continue researching. We have a subcommittee working on that ourselves in this committee. So John, anything else?
No, that's.
That was it?
Pretty well.
All right. That was it. Couple of things regarding the parking, quick. These things both have frequently answered questions already on the website. First of all, mailboxes on Main Street, the last step, once parking places are put in, is the idea of where mailboxes are going to go. We've been working on this for a few months. One of the three dominant complaints to the parking committee from citizens living on Main Street was the inability to receive mail on a regular basis, especially during the summer months, when cars interfered with mail delivery, blocked mailboxes and so on. Major goal of the parking committee is to ensure that all citizens living on Main Street are able to get mail every single day. In order to meet this goal, town staff met with our local post office officials, that was a while ago, but to sell, to collaborate really, on the implementation of a simplified, dependable strategy for mail delivery. We now have an agreement, we have an agreement with the post office, it's a simple one, it's a good one. It's three parts, mail will be delivered on both sides of Main Street to a mailbox in front of your property. What began to happen on Main Street is mailbox, mail wasn't being delivered, so people were putting their mailboxes across the street, across the street. So now we're all going to bring them back in front of people's own property and they're very, very excited about that. All mailboxes will be placed adjacent to driveways, following the U.S. Postal Service guidelines for installing mailboxes. And that's, you can just Google that, you'll see exactly what we're talking about and it will be done exactly the way the post office wants it done. And thirdly, there'll be no designated parking space will interfere with delivery of mail to any mailbox. And the parking spaces have been put out that way, have been drawn that way, are going to be put in that way. And then the final thing, we put the mailbox where it will not interfere in any way, shape or form. So we believe the plan is simple, post office, and we've been working on it, and I think it'll be very positive for the people living on Main Street who need to get mail delivered. Second question came up at the end of last week, was an interesting question, came up regarding vacuum pits along our streets. These are, if you go along our streets, you'll see manhole covers, manhole covers. Under there is a vacuum pit, a vacuum pit. It has to do with sewage treatment, obviously, has to do with the sewage system and is maintained by Brunswick County Public Utilities. And the question was, does the parking plan interfere with maintenance, the vacuum pits? During the planning stages, where I explained to people who called me and wrote me, during the planning stages for parking on Canal Drive, North Shore Drive and Main Street, and this was, this was, this is more than three months ago, Brunswick County Public Utilities requested that the town not have any vehicles parked on top of the vacuum pits. Thus, vacuum pits would obviously not be under any cars. And whenever there was a sewer problem or a vacuum leak, as they call it, workers must take the manhole cover off and address the problem. So it's great when you don't have a car parking over the vacuum pit, which would cause them to sit there and wait for the car or the people who own the car to come back from the beach or something like that. So we promised them, three, over three months ago, the town agreed that no vacuum pit would be located within a designated parking space in the island for any reasons, any reason, shape or form. We have made sure that the parking plans are created for parking, that we adhere to that promise, we still do, and everything, they're happy. We're happy, we lost some parking places on Canal Drive because of that, which caused some aggravation on my part, but other than that, we went along with them beautifully and it's been a good partnership, very good partnership. Last thing, we received a thank you list for the people up here and for you here too. We received a thank you letter last week from a gentleman by the name of Bert Barman, who is the coordinator of a second helping dash three G. This is an organization for food recovery and redistribution. It's organized that is set up in the streetscape lot on each Saturday, and you might have seen this, between July 4th and Labor Day over the past several years. The volunteers collect food from renters who want to donate food rather than throw it away on a Saturday when they're leaving. And they collect food from usually about 8:00 a.m. to noon. The concern when I got involved, they were thinking, they were thinking they would have to pay for parking places and we said, no, we know the parking, how it goes in their Saturday mornings at that time. So we gave them, you know, two, three spots and it's worked out very nicely for them. Their summer, their team of volunteers collected and delivered over 10,000 pounds of food, which loosely amounts to about $25,000 of aid for our neighbors in Brunswick County. Bert would like to thank town administrator, mayor, town council for the support of this ministry of feeding those less fortunate in our community. And I'd like to thank Bert for his cooperation and he was easy to work with, he's a nice guy and he really cares about the people in Brunswick County who are less fortunate. So Lisa, I'll give you this letter for file or whatever, whatever happens. That's it.
Mr. Nern, let Hannah go ahead.
Thank you.
Bernie Michael, show it.
First, I want to thank our, one of our newest departments, the facilities maintenance department. I see a lot of difference in the job they do cleaning the building and taking care of a lot of things. Second, and this is most important, we have a lot of new people living here. I urge everybody to register to vote and then go out and vote on election day. That's it.
You want it?
Yeah.
John.
My turn, thank you. First off, I'd like to say thank you to everybody who, for all their well-wishes for me after my spine surgery. It's two weeks now and I'm, as you can see, I'm moving. I may not be thinking very clearly, but I am here and I am moving. Second thing, just remind you, Thursday, September 11th, 2:00 p.m., we have ceremony, 9/11 remembered ceremony in the park at the 9/11 memorial. Everybody is encouraged to come out if you can. Next on my item I have is, I represented the town of Sunset Beach along with Councilman Posdell at the August Grand Strand Area Transportation Study, also known as GSATs meeting. A key item to report and that has been both the Beacon and the Star News, is that the environmental impact study for the Carolina Bays Parkway Extension, that's the extension of South Carolina 31 that we take to go down to Myrtle Beach, the airport and stuff like that, into North Carolina, has been completed and it's now available for review online as well as there's a hard copy in the lobby, isn't that right, Lisa? Okay. In the environmental impact study, there is a preferred route from along the South Carolina border near Hickman Road, that's NC 57, to Longwood at 904. And then in this preferred route for the environmental study, it goes down to US 17 at McDonald's at our 904 intersection. This would bring everything from SC 31 in South Carolina traveling up here to that 904 intersection. From that point, it follows US 17 north to Shiloh. There is also an alternate route under consideration that crosses 904 at Longwood and then instead of coming to 17 at our McDonald's, it proceeds north on US, north to Shiloh, intersecting at Route 130. This bypasses and does not disrupt US 17 from 904 to Shiloh. So as a follow-up, the main point here is that on Monday, September 29th, there will be an open house from 5:30 to 6:30, 5 to 6:30 p.m., followed by a public hearing at 7:00 at the Sea Trail Convention Center for public input on these routes. I strongly encourage everybody to go talk to the NC DOT and South Carolina DOT representatives that will be there to answer your questions and talk to you. And, and from my perspective, we really don't want this road coming in and intersecting at 904 and 17 at McDonald's, that will really mess up transportation in our area. The town of Sunset Beach here, in the GSATs process, has actively supported this alternate route that goes from Longwood to 130 and avoids dumping all the Parkway traffic onto US 17. And it keeps it from disrupting, our idea is to keep it from disrupting the communities, the businesses and the churches along, from 904 to Shiloh. So with this in mind, I would also like to add a discussion and agreement on a resolution on the Parkway at our next meeting and we'll put that in the directives. Yep. I got one more item, please. This is just to make everybody aware of the discussion going on in county about fire fees and converting them into fire fee, fire taxes. The Brunswick Beacon reported in late August that the Brunswick County Fire Chiefs Association met with the Brunswick County Mayor's Association and presented a recommendation for a new fire service funding mechanism in the county. This would move from our current fire fee system based on heated square footage and unimproved property to a fire tax system based on property tax values. The big input coastal areas, coastal communities like this generally have higher tax values than the inland part of the county, and so we would pick up a much bigger burden. Did you, did you go to that meeting?
I didn't go to the meeting, but I was involved in the process of.
Okay. Okay. This, the main point here, this change is going to have a major impact on what South Sunset Beach taxpayers is going to pay for tax protection. And so I'd also like to request an update, that we have a discussion of this at the next meeting, perhaps with the fire chief and Tara, both of you to talk through what the impact would be on us and any alternatives we might have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, thanks.
Anything else? Paul, do you have anything? All right. All right, let's move on. Public hearing and town council action items. We'll let you introduce this, Ron, before we actually open up the public hearing, so if you just want to get a brief, go from there. Thanks, sir.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. And I'll try to be brief, but I know it's also a fairly complex amendment, so. The planning board at its May 15th meeting initiated a conversation on eliminating minimum parking standards for non-residential developments in the town. We took that direction and brought back an amendment to them for consideration of the July meeting. It was continued, good discussion, they made some suggested changes, they wanted to look at it again, those changes were incorporated, and at their meeting last month in August, it was presented to the planning board, and they ultimately have voted to recommend approval of this amendment that is before you today. That's kind of just the generalities of that. So the amendment would eliminate minimum parking standards for non-residential developments in the town of Sunset Beach. It does not, it does, no amendment or no changes proposed for residential development. So if apartment complex was to come in and they would have the same standards, if this ordinance has adopted the same standard tomorrow as they are, as they do today. But for businesses, it would be eliminating minimums, the maximums are not touched, the maximums will stay exactly like they are. There were, and then it's the last piece of the amendment that I can, you know, certainly more than willing to respond to questions from council. Planning board felt like if the opportunity is for a business to add more square footage by eliminating minimum parking, then they wanted the space that would, that could be used for that parking to be landscaped. So there's a provision towards the back of this ordinance before you that would require additional landscaping should a property owner choose to eliminate, have fewer spaces than what would be allowed.
Yes, sir.
That's the gist of the one.
All right. Now, council has anything, we're going to look for a motion, open up a public hearing?
We could make.
We ask questions now or do we ask questions later?
Yeah, people want to ask them, ask them before we start, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I may have missed it in there, but what is the impact on the commercial BB-1 section of the empty space in, on the island? Does this affect them, does this affect BB-1?
No, sir, the code currently allows the BB-1 to have a reduction, and actually. I muted it, sorry, thought I was turning it on, sorry, Alan. Current code allows a reduction in the BB-1 and the MB-2, in the required spaces. This code will eliminate a minimum standard and does not impact the maximum standard. The maximum standard would stay the same.
Okay, so.
As an example, let's say a 5,000 square foot retail center was proposed on the beach today, the code would require one space for every 200, so that's, I can't do the math behind it, but, so, they could reduce that by 10% on our current code. This wouldn't, if the ordinance is approved, they would have no minimums, but the maximum would still be 20% above what is allowed.
So theoretically, a 5,000 square foot place could have two parking spots?
Yes, sir. On the island or the mainland, yes, sir. My experience with plan review is, most developers are doing, they know how many parking spaces they want to have. Sometimes the code will get in the way with that, not allowing enough. My, it's a good economic development tool, particularly for redevelopment opportunities. In my past experience, we had somebody wanted to come in, just as an example, do a restaurant, the restaurant by code may have required 25 spaces, there were only 12 spaces on the property. We would have to tell them, sorry, you can't go there because you don't have the 25 spaces. That business owner had already done his business plan and understood, you know, the proximity to residential, people could walk or ride their bikes. I don't need to have 25 spaces, 12 will work for that particular business.
So now we're leaving it up to the business, the business, the people who want to develop the commercial spot, space to do that, to make those decisions.
From a minimum perspective, the maximum does not change.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
You have a question, Mike?
Yeah, just, just quickly, Ron. What was the impetus of doing this, for just for the people out here? What was the impetus of making this change? Was there?
From the planning board's perspective, and then it's also captured in the case summary, economic development is one, trying to encourage businesses to come to town, Sunset Beach. We have a lot of, it's right up front here, Sunset Boulevard area, you know, to the, going that way, we have a lot of opportunities for commercial development along there. So, one was economic development, another is opportunity for increased impervious material, so less impervious. That was one of the reasons why they wanted to require the additional landscaping should someone reduce the parking space. It can hamper redevelopment, if there's redevelopment going on. I mean, if you look where the Family Dollar, Dollar General is up the street here, you know, there's a vast amount of parking that goes unused, it's just not, it's just unused at all. Requiring parking can encourage tear downs, meaning I've got to put in those 15 additional spaces, so I'm going to buy the business next door, I'm going to buy the house next door because it's owned properly, now I have to tear that down. So it's less adaptive reuse, trying to get a, get a position, let's plan for people and not for cars. Potential, I think, tree, opportunities for additional tree protection and for more, more planting, potential for more green space. And parking is ultimately not the most efficient use of land. Those are the reasons that were cited in the case summary, but also in conversation with planning board.
I like, I like the idea of green space, I like the idea, if you don't use those minimum parking places, you've got to put in trees, landscaping, whatever, so it just doesn't go looking ragged and all that kind of stuff, look pretty good, you got it from the trees. So I think that's a very good idea, moving forward.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I have another question for you.
Sure.
Okay, the, we've got these, the continuing zone, conditional zoning agreements with Riptide and Sea Trail and Angel Trace, both of those areas have some commercial properties. Does this change what we have in our conditional zoning, or would these rules apply to those, those spaces?
In my opinion, they do not change, they're separate, basically standalone ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that was the basis of the conditional zoning.
That's my, that's my understanding, in my opinion of that.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't mean they couldn't, this is meant that they couldn't come back through the process.
Yeah.
But it is a planning board meeting.
If they want to change the conditional zoning, we have set up procedures for them to make changes. Okay, otherwise, they have to stick to it. Good, thank you.
And also in the mud district now, mud district, there's no minimums or maximums.
Not with this proposal, the current code is not clear in the mud, whether, how to do it. So, a lot of those properties in the mud are, and there's a lot of individual properties in the mud, they don't have parking on the same piece of property. So, one of the intent of this was to clarify, for the mud, let's look at the mud as a district, and not as an individual piece of property.
Okay.
And also that would allow the on-street parking they have in the mud to count towards maximum, or to count towards parking, and so forth. So that was, one of the reasons why that was included in here was to clarify what the mud parking requirements are.
Okay.
Because it's just, to be honest with you, my, my looking at it was real, real hard for me to provide what I feel like good, sound direction from anyone who was coming in with the mud, either way the ordinance was written.
Okay. Hopefully, this would encourage more commercial development in a lot of the empty spaces that we have in the area.
That's certainly one of those.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, too.
Anyone else have anything?
I don't, I don't have any questions but a comment, it was part of the draft in this document, and I think it makes the most sense for anybody trying to come in to this community to start up a business. Let the entity determine how many spaces they need, which is, which is a really good idea, so.
If I have nothing else, do I have a motion to open the public hearing in regards to Section 332, non-residential minimum parking requirement?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Floor is now open, if anyone would like to speak, please step to the microphone. All right. Nobody's going to speak, do I have a motion to close?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion between the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead, Ron, on the next, on your ordinance adoption.
Yes, sir. So ordinance adoption, certainly going as much detail as the council would like me to go into, you do have an ordinance before you, planning board has reviewed it, provided a recommendation to this board for approval, that was a 3-0 vote, we only had three planning board members at the last meeting. They have a consistency statement in your packet, and you are required to pass a consistency statement with the adoption of this ordinance, should you choose, whether it's approved or denied.
Most pleasure, council, in regards to this.
I'll make a motion that we accept. Do it, 3D. The town council, everybody approves the proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance and finds, finds one, with the town's comprehensive plan, 2017 Town and Sunset Beach Land Use Plan, as the policy statements regarding economic development and environment tend to generally support the idea of no parking minimums for non-residential development. And two, that it is in the public interest because the amendment promotes economic development, protects the environment, and supports small businesses in accordance with the goals outlined in the 2017 Land Use Plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ron, you need to leave, you can go ahead, sir. Yes, sir. Next up will be our public comments on agenda items only. If anyone would like to speak, please come to the mic, announce your name, address, and you'll have, they'll set the little clock up there for three minutes that you have to speak. If anyone would like to speak, please come on, on agenda items only. All right. Not, we'll be moving on next to our consent agenda, our minutes and our monthly reports. Does any member of council have any questions for any of our department heads in regards to anything on these? Everybody's good?
Maybe we should point out that the minutes were amended to add in public comments at the end of the last meeting that had been amended. So they're.
All right. If nobody does, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is our town administrator report, Ms. Sangin, you had the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and if you will allow all the staff members to leave.
Yes, any staff member doesn't have anything left, more than welcome to go. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, good job.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things for you. I echo Mayor Purtem Corbett with the 9/11 ceremony, that'll be Thursday at 2:00 at the park, and then the GSATs, September 29th, open house and public hearing, that'll be at Sea Trail. Recycling applications can be completed on the website and payments made online. The recycling postcard reminders were mailed today, we did have a hiccup at the printer and those were delayed going out. So if you need, still need to get your recycling application in, you can do that online and pay online as well. The Tree Board is finalizing the draft tree ordinance that will be sent to the council for adoption consideration, hopefully next month. They are currently working on their Sunset, Sunset booth and what materials that they will display and hand out. The ERC is finalizing their shoreline planting workshop scheduled for September 22nd at the community center, and you'll be learning more information about that through the website. And they are also reviewing the handout materials that we have on hand and determining other visual aids that will be at their Sunset at Sunset booth. For our projects list, for the Jinx Creek Realignment Project, the notice to proceed has been issued to Coastal Protection Engineering, and you should start seeing some work being done in that area. Main Street Parking, the notice to proceed has been issued for that project, the contractor is mobilizing this week. The project will begin at 40th Street and work their way towards Sunset Boulevard South, and then proceeding along Main Street to the east. When they get to Canal Drive, they will turn around and do the oceanfront at that point. Lane closures will occur periodically, and please avoid traveling Main Street if at all possible. Catchment 7, Stormwater Project, that notice to proceed has also been issued, the contractor will be mobilizing in the coming weeks. This project will begin on 6th Street and Canal Drive, work toward Main Street, and then continue along Main Street to 4th. The intersections of 4th, 5th and 6th Streets at Main Street will be closed while work is occurring on those roadways. The Modestico Park, the Tree Board is working on the landscaping plan for the park, and as this is a major site development, the plan will be going to the planning board for review in hopefully October. As always, I continue to block off every Thursday afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00 to meet with the public and encourage anyone who has any questions or comments to come see me. And lastly, I'd like to ask Amy to come up to tell us about the plans for this year's Sunset at Sunset celebration. Sure?
Did you say September 11th, was that a tick lock or?
It's at 2. It's at 2.
I thought you said that, thank you.
Hello, plans are far underway for Sunset at Sunset. It is going to be on Saturday, October 4th, from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. We'll have about 100 different craft vendors, local businesses, and organizations that are going to be participating, as well as 10 to 12 different food vendors, and we'll have two bands as well. We have one local band, called Brunswick Stew, and they will be performing from 10:00 AM until noon. We'll have a short break, and then at 12:30, White Wing Dove will come in, and they will perform until about 3:30. And that will wrap up the event. We will also have beer and wine vendors for that, we'll be doing setup on Friday, we'll be meeting with volunteers on the 22nd to review all of the details with all of the public that's going to be coming to help, and West Brunswick High School is also going to be providing some assistance with their key club to help the vendors in loading out at the end of the day.
Are you still in need of any vendor, or vendors, I'm sorry, you still need any volunteers?
We are always in need of volunteers. I will be posting on, there will be a post going up on our social media for the times of the meetings, so that people can come and sign up at that point. And I'm doing two meetings on the 22nd, one at 10:00 AM and one at 3:00 PM.
Got a question on just slightly different subject.
Sure.
September 11th, at 2:00, we're having a ceremony.
We are.
How are you going to stop the vendors that period of ceremony, are you just going to?
We're going to be abbreviating the market on Thursday, so the market will finish at noon, and the vendors will be gone by 1:00 PM. So that'll give us time to reset, and we'll be able to be setting up the ceremony while the market's happening, but they've been told that they need to be done, so we'll make sure that they're done. And some vendors have just decided that they're not going to come because it's a shortened market, so we'll have a little bit of a smaller market as well.
Okay.
And right now, just if anybody sees anything, the uplighting installation under the oaks at the park is beginning today, and will be done by Wednesday, so we will have the uplighting in place after that, for those four live oaks in the center of the park.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Thanks, Amy.
Does any member of council have any questions in regards to any of the administrative stuff?
I've got one other thing that I forgot about, sorry. For the monthly report for the paid parking for the year, or from, it started April 1st through August 31st, we have net proceeds of $416,432. We have expended $149,588, so we have $200. So we have $266,844 going towards the $535,000 parking contract expenditure.
For Main Street.
For Main Street, mhm.
Now, are we going to put this now, where are we going to put it, Lisa? So everybody can see this?
This is going on the website, Kimberly may have put it up already. She's putting it up right now.
She's doing it now.
And this is a little different than the one that you have been seeing, this is actually broken down by all of the, the ways that the money is coming in, through the permits, through the violations, fines. So you'll be able to see all of it.
You've got it by the hour, too, as well.
Right.
Does any member of council have anything else? Ms. Sangin, we'll move on.
Thank you, sir.
Move on to new business, thank you, ma'am. Appointment to the ABC Board was pledged from council in regards to five members, Ed, Mr. Frank Eberhart, Mr. Hal Walker, Patrick Fosse, Jim Kent, and Thomas Torigula. What's the pleasure of council in regards to this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we reappoint Frank Eberhart to the ABC Board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second him.
Do I have any more discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on next to our appointment to the planning board. What's the pleasure of council in regards to this position?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, before I make that motion, I think everybody who applied for that position was very, very well qualified. So with that being said, I would like to make a move that Dana Reed fill the open position of the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Here's not.
All right. Further, council, what would y'all like to do?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like the motion that we, move that we appoint Mike Bowman to the planning board.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have no vote.
Okay. That'd be Mr. Bowman.
No vote means yes.
I know.
All right. Moving on next, will be our appointment to the Board of Adjustment. What's the pleasure of council in regards to this? This is a, actually, this is just a fill-in or?
The alternate member.
Yep.
Yeah. I'd like to make a, make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, just point out that the alternate member is still expected to go to all the meetings and be there, be fully knowledgeable of what's going on, so that if there is an absentee, that he, that alternate member is in a position to, to vote and knowledgeably on the topic. And so with that, I'd like to nominate Kurt Whalen for the Board of Adjustment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Favor? Any opposed?
No.
All right. And we'll be moving on to the budget amendment, Public Works, 982025. Go ahead, Ms. Tara.
Okay. So this budget amendment, it is right now coming out of fund balance, but it will be covered by the sales surplus in Public Works, and so this will be reversed and moved into surplus later, if approved. The Public Works load and pack that we had gotten the quote for, as we understood it, it had the, the self-dumping bed, and they actually did not put that in the quote as we thought that they did. They actually put a manual, whatever, they, they had the manual one instead of the self-dumping. And to, for the purpose that we have for that, that doesn't do us any good. And so this is to get it to the correct quote. I do know that Public Works will have enough surplus to cover this difference this year.
What are we getting rid of?
We have the backhoe, and there's multiple different equipment.
I have no real objection to, I have no objection whatsoever to doing this budget change for the Public Works. I think, you know, promising that we will cover this with a future sale of our goods is not appropriate. You know, right now, we're just going to bite the bullet, take it out of our general fund and put it in there, and if at some point in the future it gets covered, then it gets covered, but it'll be back into the general fund, and, and we really don't see how that happens. So I don't, I don't think that we're going to sell surplus goods is a good explanation or justification for.
No, we're taking it out of the general fund, fund balance at this point. I just know that we have things already selling that is going to make up that difference.
What's the pleasure of council in regards to this?
I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the attached budget amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Disposition of directives, thank you, Tara. Disposition of directives, the GSAT resolution set for October, and then the.
Discussion of fire fees.
Yes, fire meeting stuff, October.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. If not, we'll move on to the public comments. If anybody would like to make a public comment, you're more than welcome to come to the mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Joseph, 915 San Piper Bay Drive. I recently was informed that there are now three voting areas for Sunset Beach. I call that gerrymandering. Do you, can you tell us anything about that, how it came about, who decided, and if we as a town had anything at all to say about it? Because I look at that as a way of diminishing our vote. And I know normally you don't answer questions, but.
I have no idea.
Nobody knows.
All, all I know is that there was talk in the Board of Elections about the number of people voting at our voting location, and so there was a spreading out of some of the outlying areas of Sunset Beach to other locations. That's all I know. One's Seaside Methodist, the other is Calabash. That's all I know.
Well, I think this is an outrage that our citizens, you know what's going to happen. People are going to go to a polling place, and they're going to be told, no, you don't vote here. And they're going to go home and not vote. It's a wonderful way to diminish our vote. So I guess I'll go to the county to try to figure out which person came up with this scheme to diminish Sunset Beach even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something the town can follow up on and see what's going on?
Lisa? We find out why they did.
Anyone else? Public comment, any of them? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Does council have anything yet?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?